At six o'clock, I'll call the meeting of the Olive Branch Plant and Commission to order, and we will start off with the roll call.
Before we do the roll call, roll call, I do want to make an announcement just to give y'all a heads up for next month. In November, the second Tuesday falls on November eleventh, which is Veterans Day, which is going to be a holiday. So the city will be closed, so the planning commission meeting for November will be Wednesday the twelfth. I just want to put it out there for y'all now and not blindside y'all when I send you the packets in November. Um, all right, so I'll do all the paperwork.
Here.
Deion Jones.
Here.
Janice Lewis.
Here.
Mark Wong.
Here.
Diane Singer.
Here.
Darlene Singh.
Here.
Steve Stratt.
Okay, you've, you've received in your packets the minutes of the September ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Are there any corrections or additions that need to be made to the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Mr. Jones to approve the minutes. Do we have a second to that?
A second.
Uh, we'll have a second by, by Ms., Ms. Singer. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes have, have been, been approved. Um, under the old business, we have an application for a zoning map amendment submitted by Sam Gassia at Pan American Engineers on behalf of Murphy Oil, uh, U.S. A property owners, and it was a request to rezone the prop from PUD Plant Unit Development to C two Highway Commercial District for the purpose of establishing a convenience store with fuel pumps at this location. The one point two oh plus or minus acre subject property is located at the northwest corner of Hacks Cross Road and Highway three oh two Holiday Crossing Section A, first revision lot one on a seventy fifteen Hacks Cross Road, and this has been withdrawn, and we received a memo, uh, of explanation, and it's been determined that the rezoning is not needed for this application. However, a conditional use permit is required for the convenience store with, with the fuel pumps, and will be considered by the Board of Adjustment on Thursday, November the thirteenth at six P.M. So if any of you are here for this application, it goes before the Board of Adjustments on Thursday, November thirteenth at six P.M. So, uh, if you're interested in that, you need to be at that meeting on November the thirteenth. So if anyone is here for that application, this has been withdrawn from, from the planning commission. Okay, under the new business, we've got an application for a zoning map amendment submitted by Andy Richardson, R N H Engineering and Surveying LLC, on behalf of property owner Betty Funderburke. The request is to rezone one point seven five plus or minus acres from A R Agricultural Residential District to C two Highway Commercial District for the purpose of allowing firework sales. The subject property is located on the south side of Goodman Road, approximately nine hundred and sixty feet west of Huey Road, and we'll now have the staff presentation on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll, first here, I've got some vicinity maps to identify, uh, the, where the site is. Uh, it's on Goodman Road. You can see, here's the regional area map between Davidson Road, right here, and Pleasant Hill Road. The site is, uh, on the southeast corner of the intersection of Goodman Road and Wedgewood Drive, right here. Um, moving down to the left here, you can see the subject property with the adjacent property zoning. Uh, presently, it is A R. Here's the site. To the west, there's a planned development, and to the east, uh, C four. And then there's commercial also more toward the east. Uh, there is office across the street. Uh, I also have an aerial here, uh, of the site right here on Goodman Road. It is a forested piece of property. So in summary, uh, the applicant, Andy Richardson, with R N H Engineering and Surveying, on behalf of property owner Betty Funderburke, has submitted for consideration a rezoning request to rezone a plus or minus one point seven acre portion of an unplanted one hundred and sixty acre tract located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Wedgewood and Goodman Road. This request is to rezone from A R Agricultural Residential to C two Highway Commercial District. Uh, the bullet points here, I'm gonna go over them really quickly. Current zoning is A R, as perceived, as, uh, previously stated. The requesting zone is C two. The purpose of this request is to rezone for, uh, firework sales. The size of the proposed parcel is one point seven five acres. The existing land use is vacant, and the future land use designation is commercial corridor. So moving along to the proposed use. Uh, on October third of twenty twenty-three, the mayor and board of aldermen amended the ordinance regulating and permitting the retail sales of fireworks within the city of Olive Branch. The ordinance requires that all fireworks operators must submit a site plan which indicates the seven criteria below, and you, I've got a map here on the right side of the screen. The size of the lot, which has been previously identified as one point seven five acres. The size of the tent or building, here's the tent. It is eighty by forty. The si-, um, the location of the tent building on said lot, you can see here, it's at the northeast corner of the, of the proposed lot. The location of a two hundred amp panel box on a powerbo-, power pole, which is right here. Trash dumpster location here, parking surface, compacted limestone or asphalt with a minimum of ten spaces. We have fourteen spaces provided right here, and a letter of permission from the property owner to use this, the land for the sale of fireworks, which is in your packet as an exhibit. So we have the analysis for use to evaluate a rezoning, and they're listed below. Uh, the original zoning classification for the property was a mistake. The staff finding is that the existing A R Agricultural Residential zoning designation of the property is not a mistake. The property was annexed, uh, into the city of Olive Branch in ninety-six with an A R Agricultural Residential zoning classification, and there has been no change to the zoning designation of the partial, parcel since annexation. The character of the neighborhood has changed to such an extent to justify the proposed rezoning. The staff finding is the subject property area has become increasingly commercial from nineteen ninety-six to twenty twenty-five as more vacant parcels that were used for agricultural purposes have been developed for business purposes, reflecting a commercial land use character over time. And as you can see, I've included the, uh, nineteen ninety-six aerial imagery. And you can see that there's, you know, some vacant lots all along Goodman. And then, as you look at the twenty twenty-five aerial imagery, you can see that we've got commercial uses have been developed along the north side and along the south side of Goodman Road in this vicinity. The last criteria is that a public need exists for the rezoning. The future land use map in the comprehensive plan twenty forty designates the property as commercial corridor. The C two zoning district generally aligns with the policies and land use character of commercial corridor. So the next step would be for this application to move forward to the board of aldermen for a final decision. And the recommended motion is based upon the finding that the rezoning request satisfies the criteria used to evaluate a rezoning, namely that the character of the area has changed from agricultural to highway commercial uses in the last quarter of a century. Excuse me. And that the future land use plan designates the property as commercial corridor to recommend approval of the rezoning of the suggested lot one of the explosive incident commercial subdivision, being a one point seven five acre portion of the one hundred and sixty point seven seven acre parent tract from A R Agricultural Residential to C two Highway Commercial District. That concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions, the staff? All right, no questions. Do we have someone here that wishes to represent the application?
Andy Richardson with R N H Engineering, two thirty-one West Center Street. And I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all have. I really don't have much more to add to the presentation.
Any questions? No questions, sir. Thank you so much. I will now open this for a public hearing, is there anyone here wishes to speak in favor or against this application? If not, then the public hearing is closed, and I'll, now entertain any comments, discussion, or motions from the commissioners.
Make a motion to approve based on staff's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Singh to approve the application, uh, to rezone from A R District to C two Highway Commercial District. Do, do we have a second on that?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Lewis. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries, and the application is approved. Item number two is an application for the final plat for explosive incident commercial subdivisions submitted by Andy Richardson, R N H Engineering and Surveying LLC, on behalf of property owner Betty Funderburke. The request is subdivided to seven point, one point seven five plus or minus acres into a single commercial lot. The subject property has an accompanying application request to rezone from A R Agricultural Residential District to C two Highway Commercial District. The subject property is located on the south side of Goodman Road, approximately nine hundred and sixty feet west of Huey Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if this looks familiar, you've already seen this slide. Uh, this is the regional map. Also here is Pleasant Hill Road, Davidson Road over here to the, uh, east side on the right of your screen, and then, of course, Wedgewood. And then in green, here is the site. Um, I'm not going to go over the rest of these slides. Y'all have seen them already in the previous presentation. So, uh, the summary and background is that Andy Richardson with R N H Engineering and Surveying, on behalf of property owner Betty Funderburke, requests approval of a final plat application for lot one of the explosive incident commercial subdivision. This application consists of one plus or minus one point seven five acre commercial parcel, and the intended use is for firework sales. Um, here is a copy of the proposed final plat, right here on the right of the screen. Uh, as far as the analysis goes, staff analysis of the zoning. The proposed final plat complies with the zoning provisions and bulk regulations of the C two Highway Commercial Zoning District. So it is compliant with the zoning, uh, with the, um, bulk regulations. Uh, the lot, the proposed lot is for commercial land use. It meets the required minimum lot and yard requirements of the concurrent rezoning application for C two Highway Commercial. As far as subdivision infrastructure, uh, utilities, fire hydrants, there's a fire hydrant right here on the northwest corner of the intersection of Goodman Road and Wedgewood Drive. And there's a six inch main water line in the vicinity, and you can see it runs south right here along Wedgewood. There are no gas lines in the vicinity. There is a gravity sewer. There's a four inch line and an eight inch line. The four inch line is up here north of the site, and then the eight inch line is off the map here approximately three hundred, three hundred and fifteen feet to the south of the lot. Uh, the sewer for the seasonal sale of fireworks is proposed by the applicant to be handled by temporary portable toilets. And as stated previously, uh, a two hundred amp panel box is proposed to provide electricity as per the fireworks ordinance. Uh, transportation access is proposed from a paved section of Wedgewood Drive, right here. You can see it right here. Uh, that appears to be part of the Mississippi Department of Transportation's right-of-way. Uh, the guarantee of public infrastructure completion, there are no new public infrastructure facilities required. However, engineering department does request dedication of a twenty, at least a twenty-foot easement centered about the existing six inch water line on the east side of the Wedgewood Private Drive. So right here, you can see this water line right here to the left of my cursor, going up right here, and then it attaches that six inch line, attaches or, uh, runs into that eight inch line, tees off of it. So, uh, as I just said, the engineering department does request dedication of an easement centered about that six inch water line. Uh, as far as variance and waivers go, the developer's not requested a variance or waiver. However, there are no sidewalks in the vicinity of the property along Goodman Road. Therefore, sidewalk constructions may be waived. So the next steps, uh, upon recommendation by the planning commission, the final plat will be presented to the board of aldermen for approval. The final plat would need to be recorded before building permits will be issued for the construction of the permitted fireworks stand use on the proposed lot. So the staff recommendation, the staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of the final plat for lot one explosive incident subject, uh, subdivision subject to the following. Uh, all improvements shall be responsibility of the developer. Add a scale to the submitted plat. Revise the plat to include the dedication of at least a twenty-foot easement centered around about the existing six inch water line on the east side of Wedgewood Private Drive. Uh, the requirement for sidewalk construction in the street frontage of the property is waived. A driveway connection to a road section under the permitting authority of the Mississippi, Mississippi Department of Transportation would require a permit from this department, which will be presented to the city engineer before use of the site. The planning commission may recommend that the site be paved for sa-, firework sale purposes, and minor edits are applicable to the plat as may be determined necessary by city staff. That concludes staff presentation.
Any, any questions, the staff? Okay, no, no questions, then. We're not required to have a public hearing on the final plat, but Mr. Richardson, is there anything you wish to add to the application? Okay, I will now entertain any comments, discussions, or motions from the commissioners.
Um, does the applicant have any problems with paving fifty foot of the entryway? And this is just a crazy one. Um, the, what's, what's the subdivision?
Mr. Richardson says, if you don't mind, just come forward. We'll, we'll answer the questions.
What explosive incident commercial subdivision?
Yes.
That's, that's not gonna be a, an omen, is it?
No, I hope not.
Okay.
I guess that's just a, uh, what the family wanted to use, you know, since it's firework sales.
All right. Um, yeah, if you've got no problems with the, with the paving, you know, fifty foot, then I got no, no other questions.
Anyone else have any?
Just wanted to ask, on fifty feet, what, um, I was going to recommend that the site be paved for fireworks, and...
The whole set?
The whole, the whole site, uh, as the planning commission may recommend that the site be paved.
Yeah, if you look at the, and you can, I mean, uh, it is...
I think the site, um...
One of the recommend, one of the recommendations is that, from, from city staff, is that they pave the first fifty feet.
Oh, okay.
And so, and then, because this isn't gonna be used all the time.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and the frequency, and I'm, I'll let you answer.
Yeah, I mean, this is gonna be used essentially two to three weeks out of the year.
Right.
And it's, it's really not gonna even really be that visible from Highway three oh two.
Yeah.
Uh, 'cause there's a tree line, and we're kinda gonna be set back in the property a little bit inside,
it kind of in the center of that one point seven five acre lot, so.
Yeah.
And it's, it's elevated above three oh two as well, so.
Yeah, my only concern was coming off of, um, what, yeah, three oh two into, into, and it's not, it's not very small, but into that Wedgewood, or I can't remember the name of it. Wedgewood, Wedgewood, and then turning into that property.
Right.
If it was, if it was gravel coming into that, it, it just might create...
Yeah, so pave the driveway more or less.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
It does. I think it would be, uh, more attractive for it to be paved, the whole site to be paved. I don't much like the idea of gravel on, in that part of town. I think the other fireworks, um, locations may have, uh, paved sites more than just fifty.
I think most all that I've seen are all crushed limestone.
Okay, okay.
I mean, there's one right here, every, I think, on three oh five in the middle of Olive Branch that's just crushed limestone.
Okay, I was thinking of, um, Camp Creek and Germantown Road, but I'm, I'm maybe mistaken. I haven't looked at it lately.
Come clear, you might have time to speak.
The whole, the whole, okay, so...
The, if, if I may help the board with that, the fireworks ordinance gives the option of using limestone or paving it entirely. When the site for Camp Creek that you mentioned was being platted, the board required that it be paved. Part of it, because of that element of what you may call a, an aesthetic corridor of the city. You know, as you're coming in from Memphis or you're driving across the main corridors of the city, that was required to be paved. The other side down here that was replatted, at the time, it was never really disclosed that this was gonna be for fireworks use. They were just plating it, cutting off to create that lot for the car wash. And then after that had been platted, everything was done, then they showed up to use it for fireworks, so. So you have, you have that option if, if you want to require. And the way the code, the, the zoning ordinance reads basically is areas that you're going to have cars drive on should be paved. So though you may say the entire site is not really the entire, what, one point...
Seven.
Seven, it's not really the entire one point seven five. You may, if you want to recommend there, you may modify to say areas that, you know, you're gonna have cars driving on, on the side should be paved. That then will go beyond just the driveway to any other areas that car may be parked on the property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Song. Um, I think I would like to have you consider, uh, that, that all of the areas that cars will be driving on would be paved. Do you think that that would be something that could be considered or agreed on, agreed on?
I might let Mr. Funderburke speak to that.
My name's Lainey Funderburke, in eighteen oh five Hawthorne, Hernanda. Uh, yes, I missed, that's a terrible expense to, to blacktop that much acreage.
Right.
And then it's gonna be sales, I think, and Mr. Song might saw me, is, I think it's a day or two before, and then three days, it's five days of sales. And the tent will be up, now that's ten days out of the year. And then the tent's gonna be up a little longer than that because they, you can't tell when they're gonna come and place it. But that, that's, that's a tremendous financial burden, and, uh, and my, my, my boy is operating. I, I, I don't, and, uh, it's just a sideline business form. And, uh, they've, I've been doing it like six or seven years up on Pleasant Hill Road and, uh, church. And so this is just a, they wanted to try another location too. And that road that goes through there, Wedgewood, that's not a city street. That was done when Wedgewood was developed. And the original developer had no access except Pleasant Hill Road to get into Wedgewood Golf Course. And he approached us, the, would we object to providing, allow him to put a road through that property that goes and then turns back west to go across that big Camp Creek drain? You know, we certainly didn't object, and, uh, so it's never been dedicated. didn't object. And, so it's never been dedicated to the city, so it's kinda like a driveway. And, and that's the reason, and it's, and it's on such a large portion of property back through there, that right now there, there's no discussion as to what, you know, the next generation's gonna do. And so, I, I wish you would consider letting us do the fifty-foot entrance. We'll do that and then crush limestone. And they've got this mix now. Oh, what is it? It's, it actually, you know, it's got a combination, and that's a good surface. It, so it's not gonna be used a lot during a period of a year.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thanks for that clarification.
Thank y'all.
Any other questions?
Okay. I, I have one question. On the fifty-foot of the paving, maybe we should add that it's gotta be done to the engineer, city engineer's specifications and all that.
When a motion is made, you can add all of that into a motion. Any, any, any more questions? All right, I will now entertain any more comments or motion from the commissioners.
I make a motion to approve the final plat with, subject to conditions one, two, three, four, five, and seven. And with number six would be requiring fifty-foot paved driveway built to city engineer's specifications.
Okay. We've got a motion by Mr. Jones to approve the final plat, subject to the staff conditions, adding that there would be a fifty-foot paved, subject to the staff, at the entrance, subject to staff conditions. Do we have a second to that?
I have a second.
We'll let Mr. Long make the second on that one. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries and the application's approved. Thank you. Item number three is an application for a zoning map amendment submitted by Dale Wilson, property owner. Their request is to rezone the property from C4 Plan Commercial District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District for the purpose of establishing a nail salon at this location. The 1.50 plus or minus acre subject property is located on the south side of Goodman Road, approximately 520 feet east of Autumn Oaks Drive, Lot Two of Roy Hill Subdivision known as 6339 Goodman Road East. And we'll now have staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To bring us up to where we are, again, we are on this same line here with 302. This is actually the fireworks stand we were just talking about. This is where it would have started here. They are moving it down the road for a new use of this piece of property. So, we've got the mug shots, we've got Corky's, we've got Devaris Restaurants, Malco, Hamilton Circle, moving right on past Hamilton Circle here on the left. We've got Big Muddy Golf Carts, Chick-fil-A Corporates over here for the area. This would be our subject property. So, originally, this property was under a PD, a planned development, which was approved in 2019 solely for the conditional use of permitting the seasonal sale of fireworks. The applicant, the new applicant, intends to develop this piece of property with a nail salon, which requires rezoning. The PD that was original was only for fireworks. That was all that it was written for, so therefore, we have to change, change the use here, and that's gonna require rezoning. The character of this area, as you know, we just got done talking about it, has become increasingly more commercial over the years. The intended use and proposed zoning are, are consistent, they are not inconsistent with the commercial corridor designation of the property for the 2040 plan. Staff does recommend approval. To just give you an idea, if you were driving down the road here, I compiled some photos to try to give you a panoramic view here. This is that, as they were just discussing, crushed limestone, 610 mix is the wording he was looking for, for his combination, but this is 610 mixed throughout. You can see here some upgraded drainage. This is on M. Dot Right Away. There is a tree line in the old PD that you may think about here. This tree line here wraps around this piece of property, so that would be essentially the, the ends of the property. So, this piece of property is what we're talking about. This is the ditch here along the front. So, on May 21st, as we just talked about, the Board of Alderman approved a project text for this piece of property, the planned commercial development, with the stipulation for any future development of Lot Two beyond seasonal use of fireworks would require significantly expanded text in both scope and design. Notably, the original project text was minimal, again, as I noted, focused on permitting fireworks sales. So, with this piece of property, the new owner intends to open up a building such as you see going up and down Goodman Road, intends to open up a, a nail salon. As you can see here, we're gonna start the analysis part, so I've got some zoning information, minimum lot size down to impervious surface ratio. But the new owner does intend on starting construction. The subject property does meet the requirement minimums, and we will talk about more of the analysis here as we go through with the rezoning. So, was the rezoning a mistake? And the character of the neighborhood has changed. So, the PDU, PUD zoning designation of the property was approved even before 192001, but the property has not been rezoned since then. Therefore, no zoning mistake is applicable to the current zoning classification of the lot. Number two, the character of the neighborhood has changed. Kevin spoke on that earlier with a previous presentation, mostly agricultural in the early 1990s up to 2000s. The Roy Hill Subdivision, the Roy Hill PUD was established in the early 2000s. Again, since that time, Goodman Road has significantly expanded into a five-lane arterial roadway with the capacity to support neighborhood-scale commercial developments of the sort permitted in the C1 district. A public need for this rezoning exists. The future land use map in our 2040 plan designates this property and the area in its entirety as a commercial corridor. Commercial land uses predominate in this designation, and it does align with the purpose of C1 zoning classification. I've just got some, just some renderings here of what the building will look like. The, Ms. Stout is here, and she would be able to talk more about the building, but this is just what it would look like, again, aligning with other buildings up and down this commercial corridor. So, before we get to the next steps, as you can see, this whole area here, as you all know, from the, the acre property down to where we were just discussing, Davison Road is expanding and growing. So, the next steps for this particular application would be to move forward to the Board of Alderman for a final decision. Upon the approval of the rezoning, the developer would need to submit civil landscaping, irrigation, so on, building plans for staff for administrative approval. So, a recommended motion would be upon finding the rezoning criteria have been met, namely the character of the area has changed from agricultural over the past several decades to commercial, and that a public need could be met by providing, providing neighborhood-scale commercial services to nearby residential areas at mid-block location along the Goodman Road corridor, recommend to the Board of Alderman to approve the rezoning, approve the rezoning of the 2.03 acres from C4 to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. That is the extent of my presentation.
Okay, any, any questions of staff? There's no questions there. Is there someone here that wishes to represent the application?
Good evening. I'm Susan Stout, 6655 Autumn Oaks Drive, and I am Mr. Pham's architect for this project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any, any questions? No questions, and thank you so much. Okay, I will now open the public discussion. Anyone here that wishes to voice their opinion in favor or against this application? If not, then the public hearing is closed, and I will now entertain any comments, discussion, or motions from the commissioners.
Any motion to approve based on staff's recommendations?
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Singh to approve the application, subject to staff conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jones. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the application has been approved, and thank you. And item number five, here's an application for the fifth revision of Mineral Wells Commercial Subdivision submitted by Tracy Blaney, property owner. The request is combine lots two and three into a single lot of 1.07 plus or minus acres. The subject property is Zone C2 Highway Commercial District, is located at the southwest corner of MWC Road and Highway 178, known as 7067 Highway 178. We'll now have staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are heading north from City Hall now, up past Maywood, along 78, up near State Line Road. I'll keep going up. We hit Yahweh in the Memphis Line. This would be State Line, and here is our subject property. The subject property is Zone C2 Highway Commercial. As the chairman said, the site currently contains a vacant building that's approximately 2,000 square feet. During a pre-application meeting, the applicant said that they plan to renovate the building for use for an office for Red River Express Incorporated, which provides contract logistics for FedEx. So, as we see here, this is the final plat of the first edition Mineral Wells Commercial Subdivision. It was approved by the Board of Alderman, recorded in February 19th, 2004. The subdivision originally included 23 lots. The proposed Lot 2A, which is gonna be located here with two and three, will be a combination of these two existing partials. We'll start our analysis here, just a couple photos and copies here of the original plat. You can see two and three here. Again, Lot 2.39, Lot 3.68. When we combine them, we come up with Lot 2A. You will see a, a condition to rename the plat. Before we go to the Board of Alderman, we'll be in contact with Mr. West to see that that gets done, but this should be labeled Lot 2A, 1.07 acres. Both parent lots, as I said, are in the C2 Highway Commercial District. The proposed Lot 2A will comply with the district's bulk regulations. The setbacks in the C2 Highway Commercial are 50-foot front, and you'll notice this has two front yards. We have Highway 78 along with MWC Road and a 20-foot rear, same as shown on the existing subdivision plat. The plat meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Little bit of our analysis here, the transportation, there's no new streets, as we just stated, it's along Highway 78 and MWC. Everything's there. There's an existing building, though it is vacant. I do think that the applicant has started to move his office and trucks up there. There's no bond, variance, or deviations, and no waivers applicable. So, our next steps would be to forward this to the mayor and Board of Alderman for consideration. If approved, the plat would need to be recorded. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the final plat for the fifth, fifth revision of the Mineral Wells Commercial Subdivision, Lot 2A. Recommend the same to the Board of Alderman, subject to the following. You notice one through six, they're all pretty standard, except for number five. I did note, we would ask that Mr. West change the numbering of the proposed lot from Lot 2 to Lot 2A before the plat is presented to the mayor and Board of Alderman for consideration. That's the extent of my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions of staff?
Real quick, could you go back to the previous slide? That's pretty fancy. That's all.
Modern technology.
Thank you very much. Well noted.
How about that? All right, no, no other questions of staff. Do we have someone here who wishes to represent this application? If you will, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Becky Spain, 616 Bar Road, Tate County. I am representing Red River Express.
Okay. Any questions? No questions, then thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll now open for any public hearing or discussion. Anyone here wishes to speak in favor or against this application? If not, then the public hearing is closed. And now entertain any comments, discussions, or motions from the commissioners.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Singer to approve, subject to the staff conditions. And we have a second by Mr. Long. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the motion is carried and application is approved. Thank you. And we have an application for the final plat for Villages of South Branch Phase Two, submitted by Henry Porter, WH Porter Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of Michael Turhune South Branch Development LLC property owners. The request to subdivide 11.86 plus or minus acres into 43 lots and three common open spaces. The subject property is on R3 Plan Residential District and is located at the east end of Sipsey Way and north of Bram Drive. So, we'll now have staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. Before you, I request you consider the final plat for Phase Two of the Villages of South Branch subdivision. To give you a general location of where we are in the city, this is Pleasant He Road, Pleasant He Elementary School at this location. This is Davison Road to the east, Stonecrest subdivision to the north. And line just south of Stonecrest is the Villages of South Branch subdivision. This area encompassed here in yellow, that has Phase 1A, Phase 1B, and Phase 1C of the Villages of South Branch subdivision. The proposal before you is to consider approval of the final plat for Phase Two, which will consist of this lot superimposed here in blue. The property is Zone R3 Plan Residential District. The preliminary plat was approved last year, 2024, and this final plat in its layout aligns with that preliminary plat. This is 11.86 acres piece of property, proposed to be subdivided into 43 lots with three common open spaces. Those spaces essentially being the roundabout in the middle right here. These lots will be accessed through an alley, that is another common space, and then there's another common space to the north here that is intended for stormwater management. So, the three common open spaces, one here for stormwater management, the alley at the back of this lot, and then the roundabout at the center of the plat as proposed before you. There will be two main types of lots that will constitute this subdivision plat. There will be nine village lots, those are smaller lots, minimum 6,250 square feet, which will all be accessed through the alley. And then there will be 34 cottage lots, minimum 8,750 square feet, the rest of this lot shown here in yellow. All the lots are proposed to be used for detached, single-family residential. And these align with what we had in the project text and preliminary development plan for the Villages of South Branch subdivision. Terms of infrastructure completion, Bankhead Drive has been extended northward. These are streets constructed. If you look at the streets, they do not yet have sidewalks. Those sidewalks will be constructed by the home builder, to build the homes. So, the applicant or the developer will have to post a, provide an irrevocable letter of credit to the city for all this public infrastructure that might not be completed at the time the plat is to be recorded. Other street infrastructure has been completed, including this roundabout. This is supposed to have landscape in the middle, so that work is still ongoing. If at the time of recording of the plat, the landscape is not in, then that will also need, they also need to provide letter of credit for that. Usually, the city attorney doesn't like that, because that is supposed to be private. So, they're gonna landscape all of that. Fire hydrants, those are utilities, water, seawall, all of those have been installed. In terms of electricity, the boxes are there, but street lights have not yet been put in place. That will be done by electrical company. So, the developer has to work with electrical company to get... So the developer has to work with the electrical company to get all of that, uh, put in. There's a private alley, as I did mention, behind those village lots. Uh, this is the alley, it's been constructed. Uh, gas lines are in place. No amenity was required in this particular Phase Two of the subdivision. No variances or waivers regarding subdivision infrastructure are applicable to this plat. The plat is recommended for approval, subject to these conditions, one to five. Condition number three, being that any public infrastructure that has not yet been completed, the applicant will have to provide guarantee to the city, financial guarantee to the city, uh, in the form of a letter of credit, plus a twenty-five percent contingency to ensure the completion of those infrastructure. Secondly, uh, we're asking the designer of the plat to add the length and the area of all new street sections that are proposed to be dedicated to the city as part of this plat. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, any, any questions of staff?
A quick question for staff. We had, um, I can't remember how long ago, started looking at alleys, the construction of alleys differently. Um, was, uh, does the builder have to comply with the, the way we're looking at alley, or the way the engineers are looking at the alleys now, or was this something approved previously?
We did require, the board, planning commission recommended, and the Board of Alderman did require in the preliminary plat, what was constructed in Stone Crest. What we're really trying to get away from was what we had in Stone Crest, this V-shaped design that put all the water in the alley, and then you get very thin asphalt, and later on, over time, everything cracks up. So planning commission recommended, and the Board of Alderman required in the project text and the approval of the preliminary plat, that the alley cannot be V-shaped, and its thickness, basically the section, has to be constructed, basically, as you would construct the public street itself. In that way, the alley lasts as much as the street, and that really saves homeowners in terms of, you know, dues, money that is needed to repair those alleys. As shown here, it is not a V-shaped. I've been out there, I've taken note. So the water would drain, it's not V-shaped, and the thickness of the asphalt is basically to public street standard, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions? If not, is there someone here that wishes to represent the application, if you'll come forward, please?
William Kessel with W H Porter at sixty fifty-five Premacy Parkway. I'm just here to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Any, any questions?
All right, thank you.
No questions, and thank you. Once again, the final plat does not require a public hearing, so I will now entertain any comments, discussion, or motions from the commissioners.
I make a motion to approve based on the staff recommendations.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Jones to approve the application, subject to the staff recommendations. Do we have a second? Okay, we've got, have a second by Ms. Singer. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, then the motion carries, and it has been approved. Final plat approved. Any, any other business we need to discuss tonight?
Not that I know of, sir.
Okay, I guess we'll need a motion to adjourn then.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr., Mr. Jones made the motion to adjourn, and we have a second.
A second then.
Second by Mr. Singh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.